Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this work session of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District, which is officially called to order on Thursday, April 8th, 2021. The time is now 6:05 PM. Board Trustees present, Winford Adams Jr., Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jana Gonzalez, Dawn Davis, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or electronic devices, please. Thank you. The first order of business this evening is a review of the minutes from previous meetings. Does any trustee have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the March 4th, 2020 board work session, the March 9th, 2020 regular meeting, the March 26th, 2021 board workshop, or the March 27th, 2021 board workshop? Okay. Seeing none, these items will be submitted as a part of the consent agenda at the April 13th, 2021 Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. We will now hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Good evening, President Newhouse and all the trustees. As you can see, just with all the minutes and all the dates, we know that you all have been extremely busy with training and everything else. We have a pretty full agenda tonight. Ms. Westbrook's going to be talking about the budget. As we know, that's an ever-changing process. And so she'll be going through with the update as we know it today. In addition to that, we're going to be bringing you some more information about our grant programs from TEA. We always celebrate this time of the year as we get ready for students to graduate. So Emerge is going to be talking about where they are right now and providing you all an update of our students within the Emerge program. And then, as we know, summer learning is something that we're focused on a lot right now in terms of planning for learning loss as we're looking at learning acceleration. And so we'll be presenting that to you all as well. So there's a lot of information we'll be presenting tonight. We'll be informative, short and brief, but make sure you have all the details that you need. That does conclude my report tonight, and I'll save the rest for Tuesday.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Our next item is agenda participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to participate under agenda participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. So as we continue with our agenda for tonight, I'd like to now recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Anne Westbrook's.
Thank you, President Newhouse. Good evening, Dr. Watson and members of the board. As Dr. Watson mentioned, we are going to see an update of where we are in our budget development for this 2021-2022 budget process. And as he mentioned, it is very much a fluid process as we are getting more and more information by the day, and we're updating and adjusting as that new information becomes available. So this is a look back at some of the assumptions that are heavily a part of developing the budget. And this is a slide that we showed at the last board meeting as we were talking through the budget development process. And so the enrollment, of course, of our students is one of the top key pieces of information that's necessary to do both our state revenue calculations and projections, as well as our projections for staffing. And so, as noted, our projected enrollment that we're using is 33,240, and that is about 2,000 less than what we projected for the current school year, 2021, and then about 339 less than where we were at our October snapshot date. So our enrollment projections, we consider to be realistic based on what we know right now today and what we're seeing, and also conservative at the same time because we're not 100% sure what our families will choose to do as we continue to move through this ever-changing pandemic landscape as well. Property values is yet another very important...
Ms. Westbrook, there's a lot of development going on in that area, especially out around the stadium. And so can you speak a little bit, especially so the community can understand how we see development, but yet decrease in enrollment?
Yes, so we are seeing a considerable amount of commercial development that's happening around the district. We won't receive our actual property values for this upcoming year. Until the end of this month, we'll receive our first property value estimate on or about April 30th. And the growth that you're seeing across the district is something that's very important and it's good, and it speaks to the economy here in Spring ISD. But we're seeing it on the commercial side, not so much on the residential side. And so I believe that's what you were asking and how that has an impact on our enrollment. So as we see residential growth, we hope to yield more students coming into the Spring ISD schools when we see that. But what we're seeing right now has been a consistent increase in our commercial properties across the district. Yes, ma'am. And so I mentioned with the property values that we'll receive those estimates towards the end of this month. However, as starting off with our revenue estimations, we're making some assumptions, and that assumption that we're using right now is a 5% growth in values, which is a little less than what we've seen over the last couple of years, where we were at 1.9% growth and then 7% growth, but has consistently outpaced the property value growth that we've seen across Harris County as well as across the state of Texas. And right now, the state value growth is estimated at 1.84%. And as part of House Bill 3, there is a tax compression component. So as school districts' property tax values grow, the maintenance and operations tax rate, which is the portion of the tax rate that supports the general fund, continues to compress. And that compression doesn't necessarily impact the bottom line for spring. It just changes the funding source from local revenue to state revenue. And so that's funded as a part of the state aid, which means the state is picking up the cost of that tax compression as a part of House Bill 3. So this is a look at where we are in our budget development process. And so we have met with each and every one of our campus principals over the last several weeks. They have met virtually with all, just about all of Cabinet, with our human resources team and with our school leadership team to go over their individual staffing for their campuses and have an opportunity to ask questions, get points of clarification. We've been talking a lot about our projected enrollment and how that's impacting the campuses and what they're seeing happen in their attendance zones and just talking through that process. So all of those meetings have happened. We did release the final budget staffing worksheets out to our campuses just this afternoon. So that process is still being finalized, but we're hoping that we'll get sign off from all of our principals over the next week, which means they'll know their numbers and they'll be able to plan accordingly as they move forward in their planning for the 2021 school year. The budget templates for all of our departments have been completed as well. And as noted before, we started off with an across-the-board cut to all of our departmental budgets of 5%. And that was in anticipation of having less revenue going into this next year. So those are completed, and we've got the itemized information that will be shared with you at the next board meeting. We are creating revenue estimates based upon the information that we know, based upon the count of students that we have in the district and our projected enrollment, and based upon those property value estimates that were mentioned on the previous slide. The meetings that we're having with the principals or that we've had with our principals, that's developing the staffing, which allows us to calculate our baseline payroll. So based upon the projected enrollment, the number of staff that we'll need, and how much will that staff cost, that's our baseline payroll cost. But we're also looking at what the cost of salary increases would be for the district. And we're working with our partners with TASB. When we did the study last year, the PACE study, we also included as an ongoing partnership to look at our salary schedules each year. And so we do have the cost of salary increases. We have those. But right now, we're also looking at one-time supplemental payments for this upcoming year. And our recommendation at this point in time is going to be to continue to look at something more one-time versus recurring because we do not have a clear picture of what our revenues will look like going forward until we have a more clear picture of what our student enrollment will look like going forward. So it's going to take us at least this next upcoming year to get a feel for what our student enrollment will look like in the fall beyond just that projected enrollment. So though we are gathering all of the information so that we're ready for whatever comes our way, at this point in time, what we're seeing, it would be a recommendation of some form of a one-time retention supplement-type payment for our employees.
I think Mr. Adams has a question.
I just wanted to be sure I heard you right. So the next regular board meeting will have an itemization of what the 5% cuts will look like, is that what I heard?
What the budgets will look like for departments, yes, sir. And so we've, over the last couple of years, we've given you a lot of information. Last year, you received it. It wasn't a binder. You would get that binder by department, and it would have all the line items of the budget requests per department. Last year, we provided that to you all electronically, and I think it worked pretty well. It's like your board book, so that's what we'll provide to you next month.
So next, not the next regular board meeting, but next month?
Yes, unless you'd like to see it sooner.
I just, I thought I heard you say the next board meeting, and I'm thinking that's next Tuesday.
Next board work session.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the last item I wanted to make sure to bring your attention to is that we're also, through this process, we've also been providing the staffing and the resources for our specialty programs that are opening in the fall. So that's the PTEC program over at the Kane High School, our specialty programs that are opening, the Polytechnic School at Clotton. The PVA program has already begun at Bailey Middle School. And then, of course, our International School over at Bambwell Middle School. So all of those discussions and the staffing related to that and the resources that are necessary to start, all of that is also being included in this budget development process so that we're ready to go in the fall with those new programs.
Go ahead and stop me if I'm getting ahead, but we're looking at our virtual schools, and now it's third through... Yeah, we've expanded it. How's that impacting staffing, or do you intend to cover that later on?
We're going to be talking about that probably this month and next month. We're still waiting for legislation to let us know what we can do. And the legislature hadn't given us the rules yet as to exactly what we can do. Our plan is to go three through eight.
Three through eight, okay.
Three through eight, yes.
Thank you. I couldn't remember if it was three through eight or three through 12.
It's three through 12.
It's three through 12, okay.
Okay, so we know that there's a lot going on in Austin right now. And so there are four particular bills that we're keeping our eyes on closely as they relate to state funding. And so the first one is House Bill 1525, and that's the state funding bill that is being called the cleanup bill for House Bill 3. And so what that means is, is anytime there's sweeping changes to state funding allocations and calculations, there's likely to be some unintended consequences that are a result of that. And so some of those unintended consequences are being cleaned up in the language of House Bill 3. The one item that I wanted to bring your attention to that would potentially have an impact on Spring ISD's funding as a part of this House bill is a potential change to the weights in the CTE funding. Right now, CTE courses are funded at a flat weight of 1.35. And under this proposed language, there would be a change, and the funding weight would be based upon which level course our students are taking. So with the Level 1 and 2 courses, the weight would be 1.28. With Level 3 and 4 courses, the weight would be 1.48. So those advanced higher-level courses would yield more funding. As in many cases, they also have additional costs as the students progress through the higher levels of those courses. And then any courses that were not a part of the approved program of study, then those courses wouldn't have any additional weight. They would just be a weight of 1, like all other courses. So that's something that we are keeping our eyes on. And we talk a lot about CTE pathways with the board, and we talk about making sure that our students are progressing through those pathways and graduating with those endorsements at the end of their four years with us. And so that's something that we'll keep our eyes on, and we're continuing to analyze and see how that could potentially have an impact on the district's funding for CTE. The other point of note was the funds for homeless students and that a portion of this bill allows for those students to automatically receive the highest weight with state comp ed funding. So we know with our last legislative session, the formula for state comp ed changed, and it's based upon tiers, depending on where our students live. And so with our homeless students, if they're coded as homeless, regardless of which attendance area they're coming from, we would still receive the highest weighted funding because, again, there's often additional needs that our students have and that would provide some additional funding to assist with costs for our students that are homeless. The next bill that we're monitoring is House Bill 3445. And this is the one that we're referring to as the fund balance bill. And it is, the way it's written, is that a school district's fund balance would be looked at and reviewed, and anything that's considered excess fund balance, and excess fund balance is noted as either cash on hand or unobligated funds that exceed 110 days of operating expenditures. And there is clarification now that unobligated funds is the same as unassigned, the unassigned portion of the general fund fund balance. And so when we look at this language, it does say "or," cash on hand or the unobligated funds. And so for spring right now, if we look at our 2019-2020 Annual Financial Report, our cash on hand at that point in time was above the 110 days, but our unobligated funds, which is our unassigned fund balance, was actually below that point. So if it's "or" at this point, then we would be considered to have an excess fund balance. And so it goes on to say, when you have an excess fund balance, how you should use those funds. And it would be to pay down debt, to lower the maintenance and operations tax rate, to supplement compensation for our staff, or to do deferred maintenance projects across the district. And so a couple of things there, especially with the deferred maintenance. The boards, many years ago, we made the decision that the fund balance was at a good place, it was at a healthy place. And so we were transferring a portion of our, any increase that we had over to a non-bond capital projects fund. And that's where we have been able to do some of our deferred maintenance projects and things of that nature. So some of these things we were doing anyway. The other point to note here is with fund balance, fund balance at the school district is similar to the rainy day fund at the state level. And so we have been able to respond quickly to disasters, natural disasters, when things happen, if our buildings are damaged, we're able to respond very quickly. And the absolute best example, of course, is our response to this COVID pandemic and the fact that we were able to order devices for our students immediately when we realized that they would be in a remote circumstance right away because we had an ample fund balance that we were able to do just that. The other good reason why we need a healthy fund balance in school districts, especially those of us that have a fiscal year-end of June 30th, is to ensure our cash flow stays consistent, though the state doesn't pay the next year until September 1st. So the state's on a different cycle than Spring ISD. So we pass our budget on June 30th. Our new budget cycle begins July 1st. Well, we're covering any of that cost between July 1st and September when we receive our first payment for that year from the state of Texas. So having a healthy fund balance that we do not see as excessive is something that's very important and has served the district and the community very well in the past. But this is something that we're certainly keeping our eyes on. What we have heard is that with the unassigned fund balance, of course, you could assign more of your fund balance, but we're already okay in that category. It would be the cash on hand that we would pay close attention to whether or not we would be considered excess based on that indicator.
From the conversations that have been brought to the floor so far, is it leaning towards "or," either "or" or "both"? What is the sense that everyone's receiving?
It's just the way it's written right now is "or." And I believe that there's been a lot of discussion about it, and the writer of the bill, I think, understands the needs of what I just mentioned, the reasons why we need it. So I think it's possible that that 110 days could change, that that could become a higher number. But that's the only commentary that I've heard in terms of possibly making some changes to the language, not the "or" part just yet.
Ms. Westbrook, has HB 3445 been heard in the committee yet?
Yes. Yes, it was heard in the Public Education Committee on Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yes.
I mean, did you watch the hearing?
I have not watched the hearing in its entirety.
Then that kind of negates my next question.
I've heard a lot of commentary, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to ask about who the witnesses were, you know, the numbers that were for or on or against. I mean, any language in terms of committee substitute? If you had heard any of that, but I'll go back and watch it myself.
Yes, I did a lot of fast-forwarding through parts of it, but I have not sat and watched it in its entirety just yet.
I really think with the atmosphere and just how year over year we continue to see extenuating circumstances, have we considered, we may as a body want to consider unassigned disaster recovery line item incorporated so that we make sure that if something unexpected happens, we're prepared in order to do so.
And two more that I wanted to make sure that we looked at really quickly. The next one is House Bill 1391, which is related to tax rate elections or TREs. And so what this one does is, if a school district were to go to the community for a vote on a tax rate election and it were to fail, the school district would be limited to a tax rate that is the lesser of the no new revenue rate or the voter approval tax rate. And the no new revenue rate is basically what is the rate of taxes that the district would need to levy in order to receive the same amount of tax revenue in the prior year, not including any new property to the school district. So that rate does tend to be the lesser rate. And so in effect, what could happen is, if a district were at their highest voter approval rate, and then they went out for a TRE in order to receive the community's approval to increase the rate, they could actually end up with a rate that is lower than the current rate if they were limited to the lesser of the no new revenue rate or the voter approval tax rate. So that sounds a little punitive in nature. If you go for a TRE and it fails, then not only do you not get the higher rate, but you could potentially have lower than the rate you currently have. So that's another, because no one knows what the future holds. And so that's another House bill that we're monitoring. The next one is House Bill 4465, which is related to the use of the various stimulus funds that have been allocated to the state for K-12. And so as this House bill is written, the stimulus funding would be turned into a grant program. It would create grant programs, and it would give the commissioner a significant amount of authority over the implementation of those grants and how those funds are allocated to school districts. It also has some language regarding the, using a portion of the stimulus funds for foundation school programs, which is the supplanting portion, which would give them the ability to supplant those funds. And then I have, not the copy that you have, but I have a note on this one that there's a portion of House Bill 4545 that creates an outcome-based funding for students who passed the star this year but did not pass the previous year. And so we've seen similar language as that in previous legislative sessions. So those are all some pretty important funding-related bills that we are watching and see how they're moving through the process. So before we look a little closer at the stimulus funding that's out there right now, I wanted to make sure that I level set really quickly with the supplement versus supplant. And so, of course, with supplement, that means to add to. That's new, additional money that's on top of funding that's already allocated to the district based upon the district's student population. Supplant is to replace, which means we would receive the same funding just in a different source. So that terminology is going to be seen on this next slide. So I wanted to take a moment to level set what those two mean as we'll be hearing that language. And you may, I'm sure, already have been hearing that language quite a bit as it relates to the stimulus funding that's available.
Can you give us a scenario example of each?
Yes, and so I'll use our Title I funding that we receive. So Title I funding is a federal program that is designed to provide additional supplemental funding to school districts to address our at-risk student population. And so those students should receive additional supplemental services above and beyond what the district is required to provide. So for example, with our elementary students, for grades pre-K through 4th, we're required to have a student-to-teacher ratio of 22 to 1. That's required. So that means that we could not use our Title I funding to provide teachers to meet that 22 to 1 staffing ratio. But we could use Title I funding to bring that student-to-teacher ratio down to, say, 18 to 1 because then those additional teachers would supplement what is required. Now, if we were to use it, which we never would, if we were to attempt to use it to hire those teachers that are 22 to 1, that would be supplanting, and that's not allowable. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so this is a look at the stimulus funds that are currently available to school districts. So there's SRR 1, SRR 2, and SRR 3. SRR 1 was a part of the CARES Act that was approved in March of 2020. So the state of Texas received a total allocation of 1.29 billion. Of that amount, Spring received, based on our Title I Part A percentages, Spring received 9.7 million. That's an actual number. That's the amount that we actually received and have available to the district. Those funds were 100% supplanted, which means they were used to replace our state aid that was already allocated to the district in order to hold us harmless for the 2019-20 school year. So we received our total allocated state aid based on our student enrollment, student populations, but we received a portion of it via federal funds through this SRR 1 pot of money. And it was very broad, the uses for those funds were very broad. And so you were able to just basically reclassify expenditures and move on. And it was 100% supplanted. And it, it was 100% supplanted. With S R 2 and S R 3, none of these funds have actually been allocated to the school districts just yet. So this is all, all estimated numbers. So for S R 2, which was a part of the C R R S A that was approved in December of 2020, the total Texas allocation was 5.5 billion. Spring ISD estimated, and that's very, very important, that it's estimated based on our Title I allocation, would be 41.8 million. What's to be determined is what portion of those funds will be supplemented to the district, which means above and beyond, on top, and versus what may be supplanted, which means will come to us as a part of our foundation school program calculation, but just in the, in the form of federal dollars. So that's to be determined. We have heard that allowable uses for those funds would be, of course, to address learning loss with our, with our students, to improve the air quality in the HVAC system, but also would quite likely include some of those broad categories that we had available to us under S R 1. And then the latest is S R 3, which was a part of the American Rescue Plan that was approved just recently in March 2021. And that entitlement for the state is 12.4 billion. And using that same methodology of calculating the estimated amount for spring would be the 94 million. Same as S R 2, to be determined, how much will be supplemented versus supplanted? That one does have a special allowable use that says a minimum of 20% of those dollars must be reserved to address learning losses through intervention, such as summer school, after-school tutorials, and the like. So that is all of this. These are funds that we know are available at the state level, but to date, we still have no idea how they will be allocated and provided to the districts to address the learning losses and to address everything that school districts are, are having to fund at this point in time. So because these dollars are here and we know that they're, that we're still pending that information, that's why we didn't bring dollars tonight, because we wanted to get as much information and bring to you true scenarios or possibilities going forward, as opposed to here's where we are, and it's not necessarily a pretty picture when we know that there's additional funding that's still pending.
Anne? Yes, Westbrook. Today was the first day of the National School Board Association Virtual Conference. And one of the sessions I went into was hot education topics for the new administration in Congress. And I don't have the names of the two presenters right here, but they were NSBA people. And they said that in, they don't tell me whether it's S R 1 or 2, but they said that states have to sustain education investment, that they must maintain per pupil funding, may not reduce funding for low, high-needs local education agencies during this period. So at, at that point, I thought, oh, we made it. You know, they're not going to be able to supplant this time. It's, they're gonna have to supplement. But you're saying this still gives them wiggle room?
The maintenance of equity that you're referring to has to, has to be maintained. But that doesn't mean that a portion of the funding may not still be supplanted. So not all of it will be supplanted, but a portion of it still very well could be supplanted. But that does give some thresholds for maintaining the equity and keeping some stability in the funding.
And the irony or hypocrisy might, one might say of this is I lived on teacher quality grants for many years when I was at Rice and at UTMB. And one of the key things always in those grants is our services were supplemental. They were not to supplant anything. So that's the way the state writes their grants. And yet, they're doing what they're doing.
Yes. So here are some upcoming dates. I mentioned earlier a couple of times that the property value estimates, we will receive those on or before April 30th. I'm sure you're already beginning to receive your property values for your homes. And, and I've received mine as well, but we'll receive the, the value estimate for Spring ISD boundaries on or before April 30th. Our budget presentation with numbers and scenarios will be provided to the board at the May 6th work session. And at that point in time, we're going to look at it for all it's worth and just here's where we are and here's what we know at that point in time with various scenarios and various options of paths to move forward, depending on, on what actually happens. The legislative regular session is scheduled to end on May 31st. And then our plan as of now is to pass the budget and adopt the district's budget for 2122 on June 22nd. And so as mentioned, information is, is we're attending sessions quite a bit to hear the latest that's coming out of the legislative session. I know Dr. Watson is in meetings just about every day, and we're always texting back and forth. He heard this, I heard that from different sessions that we're in. So as we're, we're adjusting and being nimble and, and making changes to our scenarios and our planning as we're getting additional information. And then we'll, we'll start bringing that information to you all on May 6th so that you can provide us guidance and, and how we want to, to finalize the budget for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Are there any other questions for Ms. Westbrook? Hearing none, we will continue. So for our next item tonight, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation and Equity, Dr. Lupita Henhauser.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, members of the board, Dr. Watson. Tonight, we're providing you with an update on our Emerge partnership. As you know, Emerge partnership, our Emerge partnership prepares high-potential students from underserved communities to attend and graduate from selective colleges and universities across the nation. As you'll recall, we launched our Emerge partnership back in 2018, 2019. And in 2019, we had our very first graduating class with five students from Decane High School. Then last year, in 2019, 2020, we graduated 23 students. So tonight, we have with us some very special people. We have presenting tonight our Managing Program Director, Whitney Gouch. And also, I know she may not be able to come on camera, but we do have our Executive Director of Emerge, Tricia Cromwell. And I know you all met her the last time, so she's here with us. And Whitney is going to provide us an update and share some exciting news. And I know, I heard some of you all talking about some things that have already been published, but we have some really exciting news for our students that are graduating class of 2021 here in Spring ISD. So I'd like to turn over the presentation to Whitney, and you'll be able to share your screen, Whitney.
Good evening, everyone. Let me just get my screen together. Can you all see that? Thank you, Dr. Henhauser. Good evening, the Spring ISD Board of Trustees, President.
We can hear you. We can't, we can barely hear you. We're gonna try to work on the volume over here.
Can you hear me better?
Yes, thank you.
All right, let me just speak up a little bit. Good evening, everyone. My name's Whitney Gouch. I'm the Managing Director of Emerge, the Emerge program. Good evening to the Board of Trustees, to President Newhouse, to Dr. Watson. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'm gonna share a little bit about just what we've been able to accomplish over the past three years here at Emerge and Spring ISD. But then I think the true story and impact of Emerge is best heard from our students. So we have two wonderful students here tonight as well. So I'll go through a little bit of things we've been able to accomplish here and then turn it over to our students. I'll start with just a quick video. We just celebrated last year 10 years at Emerge. So the organization was founded in 2010 as a volunteer organization. So we're excited to share with you some updates.
When I finally clicked open, I read only three words, "We are pleased to accept." And then my mom goes crazy. And the light is... I was so proud of myself in that moment because I would never think that I would get into a school as great as like Boston College.
I remember the morning I got my first acceptance, and I knew that my life had changed forever. I got accepted to Pomona, to Yale and Harvard, and I decided to eventually go to Harvard. Emerge's mission is to connect incredibly talented students with the best educational opportunities available, not just in this country, but across the globe.
There's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids who, with just a little bit of help, with just, you know, really a moderate amount of them, of resources and investment, can really change their life trajectories. And so to me, one of the most valuable lessons that Emerge has taught all of us is that these kids are not outliers.
Emerge takes a unique approach to college access and success. We start by partnering with large urban public school districts to identify the highest achieving students from low-income communities across the city. We provide SAT preparation. We ensure every student sees at least six selective colleges on a summer college tour. And we reduce the student-to-college council ratio from 500 to 1 to 60 to 1. But getting to college is only the first step. Emerge stays with students all the way through college graduation to ensure that every student in our program earns their college degree.
I am the daughter of immigrants from Mexico. And due to this, I spent most of my childhood, my life translating and interpreting for my parents from Spanish to English. I wanted to join Emerge because I really wanted to understand the college application process more. And once I got in, I was really happy. I was excited. My mom was crying with tears of joy.
Emerge is much more than just a college readiness or college access organization. Fundamentally, Emerge is about cultivating talent, the, the greatest talent that we have in this country, human capital, from communities that all too often don't get the opportunity to really flourish. I'm sure that without Emerge, I wouldn't have gone to college for lots of reasons. One, my parents couldn't afford it. I wouldn't have known how to apply or complete the application process. I wouldn't have known that I would have qualified for financial aid.
We saw Emerge as having a really profound impact on individual students, but we saw it also as changing the way that the school districts did their work. Our goal is for every child in every neighborhood to have access to that high-quality education and opportunity to go on.
When I think about moving from one high school and 14 students to now 2,400 students across five school districts, I'm just incredibly moved by the impact Emerge has had in the city of Houston.
The Emerge program and ultimately getting accepted into Emory means that not only will I succeed, I will be able to give back and assist others as well. I will be able to give back to my parents, who have worked so hard for me, and I will also be able to give back to the Emerge program.
I want to be an anesthesiologist, and then I want to come back home and open up a free clinic in downtown Houston because I know as a person who's come from a poverty-stricken place, that resources are not open to you. So I just want to give back to the place that birthed me and raised me to be the person that I am.
After graduating Harvard, I decided to go to law school and enrolled in UT Law in Austin. I wanted to come back to Texas, give back to the community I grew up in.
Emerge ensures that when talent smacks up against poverty, talent wins. Let's ensure that every student with this type of potential solves the problems they were born to solve.
Thank you, Emerge, for changing my life and for changing my brother's life and for helping us believe in ourselves and pursue our dreams.
I was able to attend a prestigious university. I was able to be free of financial burden. So thank you so much, Emerge.
I couldn't even see myself where I am without Emerge, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And the young lady who was last on the screen, Pashana, she's actually a Spring ISD graduate from last year. And so she's driving currently at Boston College.
Whitney, can you speak up just a bit?
Yes, sorry, can you guys hear me now? Hello? Okay, I'm gonna try to speak a little bit louder. My, my volume is as loud as it can be, so hopefully you guys can hear me. But Emerge, what we do is we empower and prepare high-performing students who are coming from under-resourced communities to graduate in top colleges across the country. And we're really excited about what we've been able to accomplish.
Excited about what we've been able to accomplish.
Since 2015, Emerge has served over 150 Spring ISD students across all five high school campuses. So we're really excited about the growth. By 2022, we'll serve over 200 Emerge Spring ISD students. So you'll see at the top each year, we've been able to grow exponentially, and we're super excited about the number of students we've been able to reach. And even though the number of students is not as, as great as, as great as we want, the students who are in Emerge are constantly sharing information with their peers. And we're really excited about the impact that they're able to have beyond, beyond just being in Emerge. Since the beginning of our partnership, Spring ISD fellows have matriculated to colleges well above national averages, comparing with students who are coming from low-income communities, who are coming from under-resourced schools. So 90% of students have gone off to college of all the students that we've supported so far in Spring ISD, which is incredible. And also, 75% of those students have gone off to a four-year selective college. So you'll see the second column is where the Spring, the percentage for Spring ISD students compared to national data. So I think with the help of Emerge, with the help of the counseling staff in Spring, with the help of our program staff and just the amazing students we're able to support, we're seeing amazing results across the board. And the class of 2021 this year, we're really excited that they are following in the footsteps of the class of 2019 and the class of 2020. So 97% of seniors this year have applied to a four-year college, and 94% have been admitted during a pandemic. During a very challenging year where we've had to transition our entire program model virtually, the students still have been able to meet and exceed amazing expectations. We see amazing acceptances to Harvard, to Stanford, to UT Austin, University of Chicago, Boston University, Brandeis University, Northeastern, and many other colleges. And many of these students are first in their family to go off to some of these amazing colleges, first in their, the first person they know in general to go to some of these selective colleges. And they're truly paving the way for their peers and for people. But, but you really want to understand the impact unless you hear from... So I'm actually gonna sharing my screen and turn it over to our amazing students who can share a little bit about their experience. And I'll pass it over to Bagwan.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here. It's a wonderful opportunity to be able to share my experience with Emerge and how it's impacted me. My name is Bagwan Singh. I'm a senior at Springer Lee College Academy and an incoming freshman at Brandeis University studying chemical biology on a pre-med track. So going into my experience with Emerge, it's a bit difficult to pinpoint exactly how specific experiences may have shaped my life, but it is certain that there were many ways Emerge has impacted me and my family. Both I and my family are more knowledgeable on the college admissions process and what it takes to make it to the top schools in the country. And it really does go beyond myself and my family, but to my entire community. Being a minority in America and my ancestral country of India, where my parents are from, there are not many people in the field of academics for the youth of Sikh Americans to look up to. And with everything Emerge has given me, I can enhance my community. And with everything Emerge has given me, I can enhance my community the same way Emerge did for me. And to have that opportunity is, is a really big thing for a lot of people. A lot of people, young talented minds from disenfranchised communities or backgrounds. So something that stuck with me since the very first session we had as any more Emerge cohort is that everyone that works at Emerge is doing some, doing this out of the most genuine compassion and to help enhance each student's life. For everyone that works at Emerge, it's not just a job or it's not a way to make a living or earn money. It's about helping students, impacting them, giving them the opportunity they deserve. And you can see that throughout their work. I believe I've always been a very ambitious person, but it's kind of in our culture that we stay very rooted. So even though I had big dreams, I, I wouldn't think it'd be possible that I'd go so far out of my comfort zone, even if that did mean there'd be better opportunity. Initially, I was very set on staying in Texas for my undergraduate schooling. But the longer I got to work with Emerge, the more confidence I had in my ability to be able to seek places where there's an abundance of opportunity specifically for me. For example, the school I will be attending in the fall is one that I feel is perfectly made for me and is a place that I'll be able to set a solid foundation for my career. Over this prolonged experience with Emerge, it's been an amazing journey and in so many ways, it's impacted me, my family. Everyone I interact with, my peers at school, the knowledge I, Emerge passes down to me, I'm able to pass it down to everyone that I interact with, those younger than me, those my age, everyone going through the college admissions process. And on that note, I'd like to thank everyone here funding and supporting Emerge and love to see more students like myself and Mariana to continue to prosper and represent Spring ISD in a grand way.
Thank you so much. We'll let Mariana speak and then we can invite the board if you all have any questions for myself or this student body. I think she's.
Okay, yeah, my, sorry, my Wi-Fi froze. Okay, so hi, my name is Marina Jimenez and I go to Springer Lee College. First of all, I want to thank you guys for having me here and letting me talk about my experience with Emerge. Without Emerge, I wouldn't be the person who I am today. I knew little to nothing about college. All I knew was about U of H pretty much because my brother goes there and my parents didn't know anything about the college process. So I initially wanted to go like to U of H, but then Emerge started like helping me and giving me information about private schools. I really didn't even know about like Ivy Leagues or top, top schools in the country. I was so oblivious to everything. So going into this community where they helped me go through college processes, applications and everything like that, it has really helped me initiate me to be the person I am today. I have a lot of memorable experiences and one of them was the boot camp and sophomore year. I end up forming bonds with people there even from my school that I didn't even know and people from other districts that I still talk to to this day. My program managers and have been, my program manager, I had two and both of them have been very supportive. One of them is going to med school right now and the, she passes down to a wonderful program manager and that has really helped me with my mental health because I think students during this application process, our mental health ends up being really bad, but with Emerge helping us every second of the way, every step of the way, it really helped me push forward. So I will be going. I will be going to Northeastern in the fall and I'll be majoring in biochemistry. And I don't think I would have liked, I didn't even know about the school before Emerge or any prestigious school in general. But I am going to be the first person in my family to go to a prestigious school and I am very excited for the fall. So thank you so much for funding Emerge and I hope that my underclassmen and years to come will have the same opportunity as me. As I am, as I am giving, I'm sorry, sorry. As I get information from Emerge about applications, essays, SATs, I pass down the information to my peers as well because I just, I think that they deserve the same opportunity. So that'll be all. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you so much. And both Marina and Bangwan are going, going to be in the same city, Boston. So the beautiful thing about Emerge is that we have a large college scholar community. We have over 1,200 students currently in college and Boston is one of the areas where we have over 150 emerged scholars already. So once students leave the city of Houston, they're able to connect with scholars across the country. And both of them are going on very competitive financial aid packages. So we're really excited about that. That's one thing we focus on is that a lot of times we see the sticker price, what it costs $70,000. We make sure that we find schools that meet the needs and most of these schools meet 100% demonstrated financial need. And so these are just two examples of the amazing 35 seniors that we have this year in spring whose, whose families are impacted. As they mentioned, they're sharing this information with their peers. So even if they're not in Emerge, they're impacting and we're really excited about this year's outcomes, especially during a very challenging time. So thank you for having us. I don't know if we have time for questions. If you do have any questions or I'll, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Hinahosa. Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney. Any, any questions? I do want to also do a shout out. We just found out yesterday that Day Beyond in Westfield got accepted into Harvard. And so we'll see, I see, yes, Mr. Davis, he did. And so you can see it here. We'll also have the breakdown by each school. So you'll know where our students are going. This is, you know, a much larger class and very impressed with what our students are doing.
Dr. Hinahosa, I see next year there will be 40 seniors in the cohort.
Yes.
Does the Emerge program top out at 40 or does it continue growing?
We are, and actually that's part of the work that we are doing now, but we do want to continue to grow. I mean, exponentially, we want to grow and provide the support for the students along the way.
Yes, I, I love this program and Trisha Cornwell and I were in the same fellowship group a few years back. And so I'm glad to see her continuing to do the, we're also spend some time at HIS D with her. What I would really like to see happen out of this program and the students and Ms. Gochet both alluded to this is development of our own college and career counseling staff. So that, and I know when I went to school and I went to school in the Bay Area, the only schools anybody wanted to go to were Stanford or Berkeley. And not everybody got that kind of counseling. And so I want to make sure that the great work that Emerge is doing is sort of that professional development and those skill sets are translating over to all of our counselors at all of our schools so that more than the 40 or 50 or 60 that are in Emerge program have these same kinds of opportunities. Again, thank you for the great work.
Thank you.
It sets a, it sets a model that we could emulate that I think is fantastic. So one of the things, one of the things that I think is critical is that they stay with them through the four years.
Yes.
Because a lot of times we can get them there, but actually providing the support they need. Oh, that's, that's fantastic. That's what I, that's the beauty of Emerge is that they continue with them throughout the process.
Mr. Rand, I'm so glad you mentioned that because I thought that was one of the most wonderful things about this program. That once you get into college, you're not just abandoned. You are supported throughout with a support group. And anybody who's been in college knows there's some very dark days where you, that you kind of wonder why am I here and suffering like this? And it's really nice to have some mutual support.
Dr. Hinahosa, I've been following Emerge since we partnered with them their first year. And our students have made wonderful selections in universities across the nation to be recognized. And we're so proud of them when they leave and we're very appreciative of Emerge. And when I say we, Spring is going to be known nationwide now. I'm sure each one of you saw Good Morning America last week where we had a young lady from Spring to win a $40,000 scholarship as a result of her work through Emerge. So, and they stated Spring ISD, Spring High School. So I got calls from friends all around saying, you got a kid on Good Morning America. I say, yes, our students are just outstanding. They are awesome. So thank you again, Emerge.
Isn't it wonderful how they all seem to be planning to come back to Texas and helping their communities? I just love this because sometimes I think that there's a lot of Texans who ought to get out of the state and see what's out there sometimes and then come back home.
I agree. Thank you so much. Thank you to the board. I think we're really excited in the next few years. We're like expanding our college team. Team students and we're super excited about the right, I want to come back to the community. So you may see, see of some Emerge alum wanting to come back and work for Spring ISD. So we're super excited and thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. Please continue, Dr. Hinahosa. Thank you, Ms. Newhouse. And we are going to shift a little bit. I am, I want to go ahead and set up the, my next presentation just to be ready. We are going to. Okay, I think I've got it ready and we will be having some of our presenters that are here as part of the, our panelists. So thank you very much for having us tonight. So the last time that we met was back in December and that's when we talked to you about two grants that we had received from TEA. One is known, lovingly known as the ATSI grant, which is the additional day school year grant. And then the second one is the SAF grant, which is the School Action Fund grant. And so at that time, we talked to you about the two school, two grants and about the schools that were involved and that this was a redesign project. So today we want to provide you with an update and let you know where we are in the redesign of these schools. And so I want to remind, and I know you all know, that way back when we first started this journey in 2014, 2015, when we started our strategic plan, your vision was to ensure that we were providing choice and opportunities for all of our families and their children, regardless of what school they were zoned to. And so the goal continues to, to be through the strategic priorities to create, to expand and to create those options for all of our children. And so back in 2019, we launched our lift six tenants. I, I think you'll remember that. And so in our tenants, very clear, research-based, successful strategies that are able to, when well implemented, transform schools. And so just really quickly to remind all of us what those tenants are. Number one, having a culture of high expectations, right? Believing that our children, our students can, regardless of where they come from, that our children can. The second tenant focuses on having effective principals and effective teachers in every single school. Maximizing learning time, right? Reducing the disruptions in the classrooms. And when I was a teacher, we talked about time on task, right? Reducing the disturbances between transitions. Data-driven instruction, right? Understanding what our students need based on that data and their performance and, and adjusting our instruction to meet their needs. The next one that we know is that high dosage tutoring. Whether we do this before school, after school, on Saturday or during the school day, we know that when we provide targeted tutoring for the students, that will help the children succeed. And last but not least, we talked about safe and secure learning environments. The children need to feel welcome. They need to feel comfortable. So those tenants are what has driven us as we work through the last couple of years. As you know, we have our very successful schools of choice. We also this year, this coming school year, we will be launching specialty programs. And last but not least, the redesigned schools that we are working on right now. So just as a quick reminder, in our schools of choice, we have two very successful middle schools, Robertson and Spring Leadership Academy. And when we talk about these lift six tenants, you will see them in our A and B campuses being implemented at high levels. You know, Robertson is, you know, our school that just was recognized this past year. Our specialty programs, which we will be kicking off this coming August, anchored once again in those six tenants. Bailey School for the Performing and Visual Arts, the Polytechnic School at Clotton, the School for International Studies at BAML. And those again have very special themes that will run through the entire school. But again, just to make sure we're focusing on those six tenants that we know will have and produce successful schools. And last but not least, you remember we've launched Springwood's Village and in a very short two years, we expect to have our very first IB authorized school. And last but not least, as I was sharing with you, the redesigned schools. And that brings us to the tenants that we're implementing in our middle schools. But most importantly, the tenants that we used as we began to redesign our schools. These are, these tenants are the foundation of the work that we are doing in our I-zone campuses. Both grants, one is the ATSI grant, the additional day school year grant and the SAF for the School Action Fund. And so as I was sharing with you, tonight we have with us the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Natasha Watson. She oversees the I-zone campuses. She's going to lead this presentation along with our principals of these campuses, our technical assistant partner, and you'll see we'll have some staff and parents. So at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Watson, Natasha Watson.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson and members of the board. First, I'd like to say that I'm super excited this evening to introduce to you the I-zone schools who have taken on this charge to ignite, innovate and inspire the scholars and communities they serve. The following schools that you see on your slide, BAML Elementary School, BAML Middle School, Clark Primary School, Clark Intermediate School, Iken Row and Major Elementary. They've come together. They're planning together. They have even created their own cohort name and their purpose. Right now, we're actually piloting, piloting and planning different tenants that they are utilizing on the campus as we speak. During this presentation, you will hear directly from the I-zone principals and the exciting work being done now and in the near future. So go back a little bit and add some context to what, why we're doing this. Why I-zone and why the campuses? Well, this does not mean to you, this is star reading performance by campus for the 2018-19 school year. If you look at the bottom, you can see where the SAF campuses, both BAMLs, Iken Row and Major Elementary have fallen. Also, you see the Clarks for ADSY. The particular bar graph identifies the approaches, meets and masters level. But let's pay close attention to the meets percentages. Right now, our I-zone scholars are ranging anywhere from thirteen to nineteen percent across our I-zone campuses. If you look at Clark Primary, they do not have a bar graph because they do not take the star assessment. And this would be for reading. Next, we're going to look at math performance. Star math performance, again, we see the same trend for the following campuses. We have our approaches, our meets and masters. And then looking at the, the average across all campuses, they're ranging anywhere from seventeen to nineteen percent. So we see there is work to be done. We're going to shift our focus. A couple of board meetings ago, we brought to you the map middle of the year reading performance by campus. On this particular slide and the next slide, you'll see the actual performance for the I-zone campuses. We know that as a district, we want all of our scholars to be at least at ninety percent on our above grade level. As you can see, our scholars at the I-zone campuses in reading fall anywhere from forty percent to fifty-five percent on our above grade level. In math, we see the same trend. Thirty-nine percent of our scholars, thirty-nine percent to fifty-four percent of our scholars are on our above grade level. Now let's talk about our younger scholars. Here's the data for the I-zone pre-case campuses in the pre-case circle M O Y performance. If you notice, these are our very young scholars and where they're starting early. The actual pre-case circle identifies your literacy, your math, and your social emotional. In literacy, they have, they, they take an assessment and they're asked certain questions. Based on skills that are going to be required to make sure that they grow in the prior years. Like rhyming, for example, in literacy. Let's look at math, in math, shape and shape naming and number discrimination. And then we also have a social and emotional piece where it's observational data, but. Teachers actually have to identify how our younger scholars doing on, like classroom community and safety. Are they displaying positive social behaviors? Well, you can see, yes, we have some areas where they are close to the end of the year goal. But you also see that there are major gaps in certain skills that are critical for later on years. So. Principals came together, we know that we have to have expected outcomes. And based on what we know about our students and the urgency to close this achievement gap. The principals have identified expected outcomes for each year. In the chart, you will see year one. And our goals for year one, and in the second column, you'll see year two. Where we plan to be after the second year. Yes, we do have a heavy lift, but we know that our kids deserve whatever it takes. So let me step back and let me let you hear directly from the I-zone principals who have committed to this charge and are ready for the challenge.
Good evening, good evening, everyone, thank you, Dr. Watson. My name is Shannon Swerengen, I am going to be the principal at Eichenroth Elementary, beginning for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. And all I-zone principals were given the charge to meet with every teacher on their campus and have commitment meetings. Or conversations where we went through each of the items on the commitment agreements. We were able to explain all of those, the elements that were the expectations. And we also were able to talk to them about that these were the commitments that we are taking on and we have committed to. We were able to reiterate the importance of each one. The intensity of the commitment and the high expectations for these commitments. Because quite frankly, that our students deserve nothing but the best. And that's what we plan to give them. And so the I-zone cohort cohorts of schools will transform the educational experience and improve student outcomes through personalized learning. Integrated technology, enhanced curricular opportunities, and a focus on social emotional supports. So the five areas that you see listed on here were bulleted on the commitment. And when, when teachers did sign the commitments, they were stating that they would participate and give every effort. To make sure that these were done to the utmost with fidelity. And that would be to implement the high-quality curriculum, to implement blended learning. Extended day or year, high dosage tutoring, diagnostic assessment, and mental health and social resilience. Once the commitments, I can speak for myself, as far as feedback was concerned. And I had many teachers that were excited, were welcoming the structures that were going to be put in place, knowing what the expectations were. And I know that we were all very clear that they were high and that our students deserved the very best and they were actually excited.
Thank you, Shannon. Hello, I'm Kenesha Williams and I will be the proud principal of Major Elementary for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. What is the high-quality curriculum? It's premium Texas home learning resources. It's TICA line, detailed lesson plans to support teachers. Supports blended learning, embedded assessments that are formative and summative. Schoology integration, and its ongoing publisher training and support from TEA. It also helps students reduce the learning loss due to COVID nineteen. It's supported eighty-six districts for reading and a hundred and eighty-two campuses for math. It supports teachers in quality instructional materials that are developed for in-person and remote learners. It also provides professional development coaching support that's ongoing with the resources. So that teachers have additional support and there is also a grade-level curriculum for each I-zone campus.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jeremy Williams and I am the technical assistance provider. Partner for School Design Services at Transcend Education. We are a national nonprofit organization dedicated to helping schools and school districts create twenty-first century equitable learning environments. And it is an honor, a privilege, and I'm so humbled to talk about the work that we've been doing specifically around blended learning for the past eight months with Spring ISD. Before I talk about the blended learning overview, just want to give a little bit of context about the process that we took to get to this overview. At Transcend, we take a rigid research and design process that includes a learning phase. And then a visioning phase, a build phase, and a try phase. During the learning phase, we learn about what the current state of blended learning is on your I-zone campuses. We also learned from other campuses across the nation in the, in the state of Texas about their experiences with blended learning. And we looked at a variety of facts and statistics and data about what the twenty-first century will demand from students in the future, therefore what the learning needs to look like now. We then started to actually build out what that day in a life would look like for blended learning. And now we're in this try and build phase, whereas Dr. Watson mentioned, we're actually piloting with math and reading teachers the blended learning curriculum. In addition to building all the necessary school elements, everything from space and facilities to professional development and culture. Necessary to implement this blended learning model with fidelity next school year. We talk about blended learning, now getting into the overview. It's essentially combines online, online educational materials like the Texas Home Learning Curriculum. With strong pedagogy and a digital platform that really allows for differentiation and engagement in the classroom. The pedagogical approaches that you see here, the five listed, goal-setting, mentoring, self-directed learning, small group, large group, and student production. Are very cornerstone of the learning model. Students will have an opportunity to set goals with their teachers. At minimum on a two-week basis to really see their progress, which they can access on the digital platform. They'll have self-directed learning on the digital platform. Where they can practice research and activities and teachers can see live time how students are doing it on those specific activities using the digital platform. It also allow rotational model where teachers can provide small group instruction. For students and give them that really one-on-one or small group support that they need. We'll still have large group instruction where we do introduction material and things like Socratic seminar. And then student production, mini projects, bigger projects where students can get a really chance to push the rigor and apply their learning. On the left side here, I'll just quickly talk about what that day in the life can look like from a schedule standpoint for a middle school. Students spend about twenty minutes in that whole group instruction being introduced to an objective. And then the vast majority of the time is spent in practice. Where they're doing a series of independent practice and again, small group intervention. They did have some time to be introduced to a whole group project. A big chunk of time to actually execute in that project. And of course, an exit ticket at the end of the day done on a chrome book, chrome book, to really show what they've learned. At your own leisure, I highly encourage you to read the narrative on the right side, which is the perspective from three middle school students, Genesis, Wally, and Aubrey. On what their actual day is in a life of this blended learning model. And I would pass it to Mr. Lee Day to really talk about what this model offers versus the traditional system uses.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Good evening, my name is Corey Lee Day and I'm the proud principal of BAML Middle School. Currently, our schools follow a five-step lesson structure with aspects of technology integration here and there. We're really excited about this design because, because of its potential to significantly increase the differentiation. Through various digital platforms and small group interventions. Students will also have an opportunity to work with their peers on group projects in a flexible but stimulating learning environment. In terms of curriculum, we also are excited about the opportunities we have to increase academic achievement for all students. Through teacher-friendly curriculum and ongoing coach support. So in a nutshell, we're really excited about being a part of the SAF grant and the I-zone cohort. Thank you for allowing me to present and I'll pass it to the next presenter.
Super excited and again, humble, I've learned so much from the Spring ISD team. I really felt included as a family member and excited about what that looks like over the course of the next two years. As you can see on the screen, we have the piloting implementation phases for those elements that we mentioned earlier. Right now, we're in the midst of piloting that blended learning approach in addition to some high doses tutoring with your intervene program. And this summer, we'll use the Quaver curriculum for the social emotional learning. We'll continue that pilot in the fall. And in the fall, we'll be actually implementing blended learning full-scale in addition to aspects of extended school year. Then we'll plan to actually implement that learning that we did in the fall and the spring of two thousand twenty-two, the social emotional component. With full implementation of all the components in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Again, I'm so humble and I'm so honored to be able to work with Spring over the course of the next two years. And thank you all so much for the opportunity to talk about the work we've been doing.
May I ask a question at this point? This, Mr. Williams, could you expand a little bit more on your Quaver? I guess it's software or your interface? I'm very interested in that area.
Definitely, so Quaver is a software and curriculum platform for social emotional learning. That we'll be using primarily in what we've been talking about right now about morning advisory. Essentially, a setting aside time in the morning for the first thirty minutes of the morning where students can engage in a series of mindfulness activities. A series of vulnerability, vulnerability activities where they can really start to understand the things. That we all know distract from the learning that we really need to take place in a classroom. So we'll be using that software and that curriculum piloting starting this summer and doing, and continuing that pilot in the fall. To implement in the spring of twenty twenty-two.
And we're going to hear a little bit more about it by Dr. Oh in a couple of slides, I know she will be able to share more information.
Good evening, I'm Cynthia Gomez, a proud principal at Clark Primary. It is a pleasure to be with you tonight to speak to you regarding the process that we followed in selecting our two student instructional calendar options. Which parents had a final decision to vote on as part of our ATSI grant. A focus group made up of parents and teachers collaborated with school administrators. And discussed three calendar options presented to them. The group selected two calendar options they felt were the best options for our families and our communities. We held parent town hall meetings to inform our parents about the ATSI grant and how excited we are to be receiving this TEA grant. Which will help us to close the achievement gap for our students. The process used to select the two student instructional calendar options. And to explain to our parents a timeline and process for voting for their preferred calendar. The calendar that you see on the left-hand side of the screen is the student instructional calendar selected by our community for our Clark campuses. At this time, I would like to introduce two very special guests who participated in our focus groups. Mrs. Atkinson is a parent of a student who attends Clark Primary. And she will share with you her experience of being part of the focus group. And then we will have Mr. Holloway, who is a teacher at Clark Intermediate. Who will speak to you about our calendar for our SAFE grant schools, Ms. Atkinson?
Hi, everyone, yeah, my name is Nikita Atkinson, I am a parent of a sped pre-case student named Cade. I was invited to be a part of the focus group. And during the focus group, we were able to collaborate with other parents and administrators. And teachers at this. At the meeting, we were presented with three different calendar options. For the students to have the extra thirty days added to the upcoming school year. And we all looked over it, we had a bit of a discussion and back and forth about what would work and what wouldn't work in. In our opinions, you know, as a parent, it was great to be able to have a voice and. See things from the teachers and administrative side and also be able to tell what our concerns were. After we decided, after we decided what the best options were, we all took a vote and we had the options for the two calendar. Calendars that we thought were the best, these two calendar options were sent out to the parents and it was. All the other parents were able to vote on it through the survey. I just wanted to thank Clark and letting me be a part of the process, I really enjoyed, enjoyed being hands-on. With a special needs kid, I tried my hardest to participate as much as I can. And this is a big decision and it affects families greatly, so I'm glad that we are able to, you know, have a say-so and put our. Opinions and voice, voice our concerns when it comes to. Decisions that really affect our whole family. Not just the kids that's going to be there, these are decisions that's going to kind of change the dynamics, this is going to be extra school. So I just want to say thank you again and thank you for having me and letting me. Be a part of the whole process.
Ms. Atkins, I want to thank you so much for serving on this committee and I want to thank the parents that gave you feedback. I think you made a great decision here and did we hear Cade in the background there?
He's back there listening to, "Bought the train."
Sounds like a very energetic young man.
For sure, thank you again.
Well, good evening, my name is Jason Holloway and I'm a second grade teacher at Clark Intermediate. Under the direction of our proud principal, Ms. Catherine Fisher. I will be speaking shortly to you guys about the SAF calendar. So this calendar is located on the right-hand side of the slide. All campuses in the I-zone feeder pattern will, with the exception of the Clarks, will follow this SAF calendar. Is the same calendar approved for the campuses, the campuses for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. During the school year, SAF campuses will have an extended time added to their school day versus the extended. During the school year, SAF campuses will have an extended time added to their school day versus the extended school year. Um, scholars will be able to participate in the twenty-first century after-school program as part of this allotted extended time. Okay? And I'm going to pass it over to our next speaker.
This is Berkey Hernandez Olaby and I am the principal of the Bama Elementary School. Another component to our school action fund grant model is high dosage tutoring. This will be realized, incorporated the twenty-first century community grant, grant. This grant will be available to students attending I-zone campuses with a focus on math and literacy. Core content will be met with fun and engaging instruction after school each day. During the summer, students will be able to attend a six-weeks program similar to what they participated in during the school year. However, they will have field experiences that will bring them to colleges, museums, and even sometimes amusement park, but not for them to have a fun-filled day. They will go to the amusement park to see how math is incorporated in all of those roller coasters. In addition, our school fund action grant will encompass diagnostic assessments. As we know, data drives instruction. And for that reason, our schools will administrate, will administer formative and summative assessments that will be utilized to ensure what is taught is aligned to what is learned. The data will provide insert and insights for research, reteach, intervention, and enrichment. Daily assessments given to students will provide data that teachers will use to adjust instruction and plan for small group lessons. Campus and district leaders will review monthly data to support and ensure excellent outcomes for all students. Finally, yet importantly, the grant will provide students the needed mental health skills and social resiliency needed to balance their education by creating a culture of caring. The campuses will ensure that every student has a sense of belonging, empathy, and connectedness to their school family. The program chosen to meet this need is Quaver S E L. Instruction will be delivered through a whole child approach with social emotional learning integrated with direct instruction. The Quaver S E L curriculum is aligned to the castle competencies and provides data to track student progression. The curriculum is online and it integrates age-appropriate music animation with social emotional learning.
Uh, Principal Hernandez? Yes. I just want to, uh, uh, comment on something. Uh, I'm interested that this is online because, uh, I was hearing today that teachers are much more receptive to S E L curriculum when they don't have a whole nother thing to prepare and teach, but you know that it's automatic. And it's, and some people on, uh, at the conference today said, uh, when they're old enough, it's really great to have a student actually lead the lesson. Have you heard of this?
Yes, I have. And with this curriculum, students will be able to interact and display different aspects of the curriculum, whether it's kindness, respect. And as we bridge this with our curriculum and academics, we will be making sure that our students are being kind, not just during S E L time, but all through their day and even when they go outside into their community.
So I'm trying to remember if these campuses are particularly affected by high mobility. Yes.
So I can speak, I can speak to Bama. We are forty percent mobile. Um, I know that, and we all are. So I know that these, uh, competencies and these, uh, tools that they will have are going to make them resilient when they do, um, move about within the district or out.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my concern, Dr. Hernandez. I'm glad you, you, you raised that. Um, cause you, you can have all the curriculum and training in the world, but if the kids are bopping around the campus or even going back and forth between our district and another, I just, I, I worry about how all these resources and planning we are applying to dealing with the challenges that these campuses have will be impacted by our high mobility.
Our goal was that the families and kids will be so connected to the schools, they think twice that they don't want their kid to leave. In addition to that, when we looked at these campuses, they all feed into Bama Middle School. And so we wanted to impact Bama Middle School by the use of these campuses, but by also uh, putting these resources where the kids need them the most. We were just looking at some new updated, um, uh, mobility data a few weeks ago and, um, it was amazing that we have a lot of kids that move around our district and they're staying in spring, but they're going from school to school. Well, if they're transferring based upon the high percentage of apartment complexes in this area, they'll be getting the same curriculum, the same inputs and outputs as well.
I know one time we had conversations about the ability to be able to leave them at the campus where they started, uh, especially intra-district where they're still with us and leave them where they began that year throughout the year. I don't know, you know, the pandemic, a lot of things happened. I don't know if that's something that's still in our, uh, line of sight that we're considering. I know we had discussions with our neighboring districts where we see that mobility transition across the district lines. And, um, is it a good time now to start to reopen up those conversations with them as well?
Yeah, we constantly have those conversations. You have a good memory. Um, you know, we, we were looking at those campuses, especially on this side of the district that are really close to each other, like Hoyland and I can row and in those campuses. And so we were looking at, you know, as things change at the apartment complex, those that move across the street and go to another school, can you stay at the current school? So we're continuing to look at that. Um, I think the, um, um, more looking at is going to come when it looks at transportation, for example, when you're at, I can row and you're at Bama. That adds a different, uh, layer to that piece, but yes, we're continuing to look at that.
I think we will look at some additional transportation costs, but I think that investment in the student and allowing them to stay at that campus where they started to complete that year is worth that investment. So we may, we can maybe explore that again. That would be great.
Also, it's, it's a little late in the legislative session to, to bring this up now. But the, the mobility issue, I think, is something that needs to be addressed, uh, from a state policy level. Uh, maybe they're talking about, you know, bending into our fund balance. And if we had a healthy fund balance, we might be able to address things like the transportation of mobile families, um, better. So just maybe in the next session, something that I'll try and keep in mind.
The mobility aside, I think this is some great planning and, uh, great work and I'm looking forward to the results and the outcome. And that's one of the things that, and why we wanted to start with the current data so that you all knew, you know, where our schools were or are at, why we selected these schools and then the inputs, right? The work that we're going to be doing and the expected outcomes. Um, as Dr. Natasha Watson said, you know, these are, it, it's, it's big, um, jumps that we have to do. However, the commitment conversations that we personally had with each of the principals as we selected them, you know, using the lift six tenants and then as they had the conversations with the teachers. Um, you know, we have to have those high expectations. We have to be able to provide them the best resources and then expect that we are able to deliver so that the students can be successful. So we'll be coming back and we'll give you continuous updates just on the implementation of the redesign, but also the progress of the students. Um, the curriculum and the design is that we do the ongoing measurements, right? So we'll have data that we'll be able to come back and share with you, um, on an ongoing basis. What do we see aside from, of course, mobility? What is, what do we see as maybe some of our key risks? Definitely mobility plays a, a big part, but also, um, you know, just this last full year, um, our children have experienced great learning loss. Um, many of our families, as you know, from the data that we have posted, many of our families have chosen to keep their children at home. And so that, that loss is, is, you know, greater being experienced as much greater than if they were in the classroom with us. So that's part. Also, many times our children start behind. You know, their vocabulary is much limited when they're starting school. And so, you know, for us, it's having that direct structured instruction to bring them up to speed, um, because they do start behind.
I think, I think another risk would be, um, they're very high expectations. And so we're having to plan to think through how do we support the teachers, uh, mandatory professional development, um, supporting them along the way as they're implementing a longer school year as well as more work, um, in terms of, um, what they're going to be doing with kids. And so it's a positive risk, especially when we yield positive results. But it's something that we need to think through to make sure we're supporting them along the way.
I, I noted as soon as the presentation started that you're moving, you moved our, some of our strongest school leaders to these schools. Um, and so then that, that made me think about what I, they are always talking about what Dallas ISD did. And one of the things that they did was moved around a bunch of their strongest teachers to the campuses that were struggling. And so I wondered if a part of what you were doing with the leadership also included the, the faculty.
Absolutely. I think that goes to our very first tenant, effective, uh, principals and teachers in the school. It's amazing when you have great leaders like the ones that are here. They have teachers in their current schools that want to go with them to do that work. And so as we were going through our budget and staff review process, um, with, uh, Ms. Westbrook's, they were talking about teachers in their current buildings that want to go with them to help do this heavy lift. You're absolutely right.
Is there extra compensation for going to a lift six school?
So one of the things that we are happy with, that you all have already, uh, provided opportunities through our spring rewards program. And so, yes, our human resources department and performance management is working on that strategy where, that we already have, um, in terms of reward for teachers that, um, not necessarily that just go, but get the results. Um, and so they'll be awarded as they get the results for the students that they're going with. So, yes.
I know I keep going back to the S E L, but, uh, I really had some exciting, uh, sessions today. And one, uh, said that, um, executive function is a better predictor of success than academic ability. That, uh, students who can control their actions and direct their actions are more successful, that it's a greater prediction, uh, predictor of success. And, uh, when I'm looking at this, uh, Quaver program, uh, some of this looks like it's executive function to me. And, um, and, um, really apparently there's been thousands and thousands of studies on this. I, I really have want to get into this research base, but, uh, doing this S E L type of, uh, activity for five or 10 minutes really has a significant, uh, impact on, uh, academic achievement. So I, I really think you're going the right direction here. It's going to be, and all you principals, uh, you know, the board is here to support you in any way we can. So, and Dr. Hinoza, you know that. We really want to make this a success. You know, one of the things that sticks out for me is we know intervention is critical and we know the best way plans. Uh, and what's really critical is the ability to be able to pivot. And so when we get underway and we see that there's opportunity where we need to pivot, our, our administrators and our staff, do they have the autonomy they need to be able to do that?
So, yes, they have.
And the resources, the autonomy and the resource.
Yes, we, um, we've been talking about resources throughout the entire budget process. So I would say, yes, they have the resources they need to be able to do that. I think what's great about having a technical provider like Transcend is they help us to identify that. They make sure that we're doing the work that we sought out to do, but then they're there to help lead us through the pivoting, um, when the data suggests that something is working or not working as well as we intended it to do. But in terms of autonomy, they have, they have autonomy, but as we talked about the other week, um, in our board governance training, um, we have that tiered autonomy. These are schools that need extra support, so they have extra support from us. If you're asking, do that, can they do whatever they want to do? No, it's very tight in terms of the plan that's presented tonight. Um, but they do have autonomy within that plan to implement it to the fullest.
So as I review your calendar here, the date ADSY schools will have an extended year. The SAF schools will have an extended time of, of the day for their schools. It is just for those schools. It's not for the other elementaries or middle schools.
No, for now, it's just with these schools. We're looking at this as a pilot to kind of get it going and to see the, the things that's working and not working. As this begins to work and as we continue to, um, have more schools come into the process, we'll use the best practices from here and use with other campuses.
You know, and just kind of to piggyback on what you were saying, Debbie, in a, in another part of my educational life, we used to always talk about the marshmallow. Do you remember the marshmallow, Rodney? Um, and the kid who could delay gratification. Um, so the, the, the social emotional learning, I think, and mindfulness in general, um, starting kids at an early age doing that, I think will pay some dividends for us down the road.
Glad I've been, been such a strong proponent of pre-K. It's critical. Thank you again to our parent who spoke. It's very important that we have parent and community input into this program. So appreciate your making sure that the parents and the community have all the information necessary and to understand why we are making this change for these schools. And that, that is a cornerstone, Ms. Newhouse, a cornerstone of this redesign is that involvement of the community and the parents. Oftentimes, you know, as educators, you know, we plan, we do, and we want to move on and then wonder why, you know, the children aren't moving along, why the parents aren't coming along. And so this grant and this redesign specifically has that component for us to involve the parents, to involve the community, involve the teachers, you know, the teachers have been part of this work. Um, right now, they will begin piloting the curriculum, the reading and the math curriculum. Uh, they will be receiving a stipend for piloting the curriculum. So, you know, as Dr. Watson was saying, you know, we're asking a lot, but we're also providing the supports, um, in order for the teachers to be successful. All right. You want me to move to the next item?
If you will, please.
Yes, absolutely. So we are going to move to our, um, summer school program and we want to bring you a high-level overview so you know the direction that we're moving in. Um, we want to be able to, um, communicate broadly. And I will start the presentation, but this will be a joint presentation with, uh, Dr. Matt Parisol. He is our assistant superintendent of curriculum and professional development. And he is one of our panelists. You'll see that it's already up on the screen. Um, most importantly, the focus of our summer school, uh, program is what we've been talking about. What you've been bringing to our attention is for us to make sure and that we are prepared and ready to address the learning loss that has, um, that our children have been impacted by, whether it's the COVID learning loss, whether it's being remote, right? And we will, through summer school, a very focused and intense summer school, we will be addressing this through acceleration and intervention. And so you'll see the focus will be, of course, as I said, And so you'll see the focus will be, of course, as I said, um, overcoming this learning loss that our students have, um, experienced. It will be through, as you see the presentation, accelerated, um, learning through very direct instruction. And we will be concentrating on literacy and math. And so again, very similar to the format that you saw earlier when we spoke about the I-zone campuses, just, you know, for us to know our current state, know what our children are facing, so that we know where we're moving and what the expected outcomes are. So we call, last year, we did not have a STAR exam. So the data that you see here is from the last year that we, um, took the STAR exam for kindergarten through eighth grade. In the previous presentation, you saw it specifically for each one of the I-zone campuses. And here, we just wanna show you overall in reading and math, our students in spring ISD from the STAR test before in 2019 were performing below the state's performance. Um, just to, um, kinda orient you, the darker colors down at the bottom is the percentage of students that scored at the approaches level. In the middle column, you'll see those are at the meets level, which is meeting grade level expectation. And then up at the top are the masters level, which exceed the expectation. So as you can see, we already knew that a year and a half ago, our students were behind the state. And what we also wanna show you is more current data, where our students are at as of January, when we, um, gave them the MOY, the MAP MOY. And you'll recall that we came to you, presented this data. We also have interventions going on right now in our campuses. But the most important piece that, that we want you to think about, as you see that map data uh, for reading and for math, is that map is actually a, a predictor of how our students are going to perform. If everything was, you know, even at that time, how they would perform in our STAR exam. And so you can see that our children are, you can see the loss. You can see where they're, um, struggling. And the last piece is very similar to what we shared with you earlier. And, you know, as Mr. Ant, as you've been sharing, and I know that it's, it's very dear to your heart, and all of us share this, that having a strong foundation, a strong pre-K program will ensure that they're prepared for success. And here you'll see the performance of, um, our students district-wide. Previously, you saw it by, uh, the I-zone campuses. This is district-wide in reading or the literacy component, the math component, and the socio-emotional. A piece that I do wanna point out in the literacy component and where our students are at and what we will be implementing is these skills that you see here, these are foundational reading skills. If we don't get these right, our students are going to struggle all along. So like alliteration, like, um, onset rhymes, uh, rhyming, those sometimes people skip teaching those skills, but they're foundational reading skills. The same thing you'll see with our math and then, of course, um, the socio-emotional. As Dr. Jensen, you were talking about, we know that if we can start our students, um, in the right path. Most importantly, as you were talking about that executive function, if we know how to make good decisions, especially when we're stressed out, that will help us all along. So our students across the board, we need very key instruction. And so our expected outcomes, knowing where our students are at, knowing what we have to do, we've looked at the data across the district and have set very specific, um, outcomes for this summer program. The expectation is that we have a 25% um, growth in our MAP reading. The same thing with our MAP math. We want to be able to do very intense, direct instruction for pre-K and get our students moving to that 90% mark. The expectation is that they be on level. We also will have the summer, um, retesters for our EOC at high school, because this program will be pre-K through 12th grade. The expectation is we have an 80% passing that STAR exam. And of course, because summer is very tight, uh, very quick, we are looking for a 98% attendance rate. And so at this time, I'd like to bring Dr. Parisol, and we're gonna talk about the inputs. What is it that we're going to be doing this summer in order to achieve these expected outcomes?
Thank you, Dr. Hinosa. So our team has been, um, working since November, really looking at summer school and looking at what we can do and what in innovation um, can occur to ensure that every student in spring is overcoming the, the learning loss due to COVID. Um, so looking at our inputs, um, identifying the students is what is the, the most critical piece. Making sure we've, we've found the students, we've identified the needs. Also making sure we have high-quality teachers that are gonna be effective in that short amount of time that we have to really bump up that learning and help the students get to grade level. Another component was that accelerated learning needed to occur through direct instruction. While some students benefit from that virtual environment, they're also missing that human connection, that interaction that we, um, all kinda miss as we're on, on cameras around, um, the various roles we have for our jobs. Um, and students are no different. And so we want that in-person direct instruction so that we can make that big impact. Another key input was the utilization of the Texas Home Learning Curriculum. You heard it in the prior presentation, that utilization of the Crimson Resources for our I-zone campuses. And TEA has done a lot of research, um, looking at, um, loss of learning in that, in both math and literacy across the state. And these resources were designed specifically to address that. We also wanted to ensure that we had daily formative and summative assessments so that we could monitor students and we could intervene daily. Every moment counts. We also wanna continue that partnership with our parents and make sure that we're working together um, to give them updates on how their students are doing and as well as wraparound support as we work together to help our kids. And so at the very heart of our summer school program that I'm excited to share with you today is that it's all about ensuring excellent equitable outcomes for every student. As Dr. Hinosa shared, our team has reviewed the circle data, um, the middle of your map, the TEA interim assessments, and also grades, um, that have been coming in during the course of the year to, to really identify those students and the potential gaps that they have so that we can provide immediate intervention and support. Part of that process, we set cut scores for each of the assessments. And then, um, summer program enrollment, um, is going to be tailored to address those specific needs by our students. And we'll get into a little bit about the programming in just a second. We talked about identifying the students and then now we're in the process of also identifying those highly effective teachers. Our, our, uh, research and accountability department in partnership with Human Resources it are going through the data, looking not just at, um, student or teacher appraisals, but also at the data that shows that they have made an impact on students and show stronger gains, um, than their peers in, uh, student achievement. So that each of the teachers for summer school will be identified and directly recruited by our human resource department. Compensation, um, has also been greatly increased. And you can see that there from $30 an hour was then our typical for summer school, now up to $55 an hour, so that we can bring in those teachers and make sure that, um, you know, the pay is equitable and able to, um, still support them. You know, many of our teachers have, um, kids at home. And when there's no school, they're at home and the only other option would have been daycare. And with the rights that we had, it may have been difficult to cover both. And so this really provides a great opportunity for us to get some excellent teachers in, in our doors for our kids. There will also be the opportunity for incentive pay, um, based on student growth, all being driven by the data and those expected outcomes that Dr. Hinosa shared earlier. And so we will be measuring, um, each of our students, um, and the teachers work with them, um, from end of year to the end of summer. Student monitoring is gonna be ongoing, though, like I said, about the daily formative assessments will be weekly tracking. And this data will be shared with parents throughout summer school. That was Crimson, uh, Texas Home Learning Resources, um, have a lot of great components. They're structured lessons, so they really give, um, every single item that a teacher needs is already embedded within them. It's, it gives guidance on how to support students based, um, that may be English language learners or students in special ed, or they may be struggling in specific areas. Um, it also give, helps them have more time to actually spend on the data analysis, because the lessons are already planned and the resources are already built for them. We just love all of the supports. Um, it's available digital and printed, um, and the, the progress monitoring is ours already included. So what will the experience look like for our students? We talked about earlier that human connection, right? So summer school this year will be in-person, um, for all eligible students. We're looking at having cluster sites, so there would be two elementary, one on the west side and one on the east side of the district, one middle school, one high school, and then one site for pre-K. And ESY, which is extended school year for students who are in special education and have, um, that arted as part of their IEP. We will also be offering an online option that will be self-paced. Families will be able to participate together on these project-based learning, um, instructional units and that will be available through our district website. So the summer school day, um, we're, we're gonna be having our first, our teacher trainings, um, in June night. They'll actually receive their curriculum training in advance of that, so they have some opportunities to dive in. But June night, they will get a full day of training and to be able to, to make sure that the structure is all set up. They'll also have a data set up their classroom, and then student learning will occur June 14th through July 2nd. It's 15 days, Monday through Friday, for three weeks. And we have staggered times, but if you notice on those times, each of those blocks, there are six hours, um, built in for every single day. We have a couple groups that will extend beyond July 2nd. They'll go through July 15th, and those are for our students who are in pre-K. Tw- um, and also for our 21st Century Program and students in, um, ESY. So the, what we talked about, the focus is really on literacy and math. There is also enrichment built within. So for example, we have for grades pre-K all the way through grade 12, there will be project-based learning opportunities that have arts integration, and they will have a time in that learning day to connect what they learned to real-life application, to design, to build, um, and those focus on literacy and STEAM. We will also have in those enrichment blocks an opportunity for students who are gifted and talented or in advanced, um, NAP classes, the opportunity to work on their skills um, and study skills and getting ready for that college experience, or those advanced course experiences. There'll also be courses for our newcomers and English language learners that focuses on accelerated English language instruction. And it's gonna utilize listening, speaking, reading, writing, all in, um, that interactive, social, emotional learning, um, positive environment. And last but definitely not least, is we have special education enrichment, where it'll be targeted to each individual student's needs. It'll focus again on literacy, math, and interpersonal relationship skills. So as you see, we have literacy and math for both, which are 120-minute blocks, two hours each, four hours of instruction there, and another 90 minutes of enrichment that also is going to be connected to literacy and math, all working together for our kids to overcome their, yeah, their gaps. On top of that, we also have a great partnership through our 21st Century Grant. It's gonna allow us to offer an additional four hours of instruction after school, where kids get to engage in fun and exciting activities that will also be tied to literacy and math and connecting it to real world. Regarding the self-paced enrichment opportunities that we talked about that families will have at home, they are available, like I said, pre-K through grade 12. So yes, even our seniors who graduated, and they might say, you know what, I just want some more learning at home before I go to college, we have something for them as well. And these, um, units will be available all summer long. And there'll be a unit for June and a unit for July. So they'll be able to ha- continue their learning, whether they're in summer school or they're not in summer school. Again, they follow that literacy and STEAM camp model. They're accessible on our website. And they incorporate great products such as our Myon Reader, where there's over 6,000 books that students can read and engage with through interactive activities. There's ST Math, which is gamifying learning and really allows students um, to have fun and play games while they learn about math concepts. And the same with Legends of Learning, which focuses with math and science. Now, our, our key step is to be able to recruit our kids, and we need everyone involved to make that happen. So our communications department has already been at work, um, reaching out to our principals and our staff and creating videos and communication. Um, and so campuses are going to be, um, connecting directly with parents. Uh, there's also, they're gonna be doing that through phone calls, emails, our, their newsletters, um, through our district efforts. Um, videos are being created, a video is, is being created for our recruitment of teachers as well as our recruitment of students. Um, our district website, we will have it marketed across it through social media and newsletter content that communications is building to give to principals so that they can push it out to their families. All of this is working together to make sure that we tackle COVID learning loss and ensure excellent equitable outcomes for all students as part, as the core driving factor of our spring ISD summer school program. Are there any questions?
This is the most inclusive summer school that I have seen. This is, this is wonderful, what we're doing for our students to make sure that we don't have a learning loss for the 2021, 22 school year. This is, uh, I, I'm just, uh, amazed at the preparation that you've done, uh, preparing our students. Now let's get this information to the parents and get them there this summer, because this is going to be very intensive and, and very good for our students. And I'm glad we've identified them to let the parents know that this is in their best behalf. Yeah.
So absolutely. I know we, we are tapping into identifying and tapping into our very best teachers. Uh, Dr. Hill and her HR department are in the midst of that. Um, I know we'll be doing some special recruitment, uh, superintendents involved in that and, you know, touching and, and, and really reaching out to those teachers. Um, we know they've had a long year. Um, we need them. Uh, our kids need them, so he's preparing to reach them directly. And then we're also preparing a video for our parents. Um, we've identified, this is also in partnership with our research department. We know who the students are. They will have direct contact emails and phone calls from the schools, you know, for your specific child, not just a blanket statement, but very specific as to the children that we want to come in. And so, you know, our recruitment and our communication has to be very tight. Um, because I know the children are also tired, uh, but we need them here, a very intense, direct focus. And I have to tell you, it's, it's been everyone. It's been every single department working together, um, to put this, um, in place. And now we will be bringing in teachers and schools, um, to really give us that feedback on the curriculum, to make sure that that's tight and that they have what they need.
I think this is fantastic. We all know, uh, with the current environment, there is a loss of learning out there. And so to have, uh, such a detailed, um, granular plan in place, even something available for all students, so that, that's fantastic. And I'm gonna just kinda echo our board president. Now the challenge is, is to get them here and get them engaged. And so, um, thank you.
It was funny, last week we shared it with our ACE committee, our teachers and a few of our parents. And, you know, we were wondering what the, what they were gonna say, especially since, you know, some people are a little tired because they're continuing. They got excited when, um, they presented and they were like, oh, I wanna do it. Can, who can do it? Can this? And so, um, it was interesting, Julie, she was like, well, yes, we want everybody that can, but we want the best teachers who know it. And so it's like one of those statements is, we'll recruit you. Don't call us, we'll call you. And so they all started laughing, but they're excited. And there, there are teachers, great teachers who want to do this.
And, and I have to give a shout out also to our procurement department. They're ramping up because we will be face-to-face and we're expecting everyone to come. So we wanna be able to create a very safe learning environment. So we want to be able to create a very safe learning environment, more P P Es coming in, you know, more masks, more, you know, hand sanitizers, we want to have the best environment for our children. So our procurement department is partnering with us to make sure we have everything that's needed.
Thank you for that note, because I was going to ask you, can I come and visit one day?
Following the safety protocols, you know, chief is here and, you know, he keeps an eye on us. But yes, you know, we will, we want the children back in a very safe place. And, you know, in order for our teachers to be able to work with them. So making those plans, working with our operations team, with Gary and his team to identify just the right school that has that space for all the children to come in. And and, you know, while we want to be at a focused site, we also want to be in a safe place.
I mean, on that note, we are having conversations now, especially at the secondary level. As you know, parents are, they have this final chance to change their learning option to be remote or in person. In meeting with some of the high school principals and Dr. Alivo, we are having conversations about possibly mandating. There's some kids that are remote who don't show up, whose attendance is not fair and they're failing. Of talking with parents and saying, your child won't be able to participate in remote, we're having conversations trying to find out ways. Most districts have done that. You know, we're wanting to be cognizant of parents and parent choice, but it's hurting kids and their learning. And so we are looking at that at the secondary level.
Thank you to your, thank you, Dr. Hina Hosa and your committee, Dr. Parisaw. All presenters, we are quite appreciative and looking forward to seeing this summer school taking place this summer. Thank you. Well, Mr. Miranda, you are next, but before you begin, we'd like to take a little break. How about a ten minute, ten fifty minute break for the board? Thank you, thank you. We will now resume our agenda and continue. I mentioned before we left that we would start with Mr. Miranda. But I noticed that we had a calendar here that we need to look at and hear about. So I asked Dr. Hina Hosa if she will share with us the calendar that you have presented here.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse and members of the board. You should have one copy of the A T C calendar, the additional day school year for Clark Primary and Clark Intermediate. You saw it as part of the presentation, you heard from a parent and one of our teachers. So in order to accomplish what we want to do, the community of Clark Primary and Clark Intermediate came together to look at the look at the needs first and foremost of the students and then look and see, as you'll recall, one of the tenants, our list six tenants is additional time. So this calendar looks at a jump start. That means coming in earlier before the school year starts and and giving our students that jump start, that early start to prepare for school. And so our students will be coming back on July nineteenth. And so they'll have fifteen days before school starts. Then they'll follow the regular calendar, instructional calendar that was adopted for the district. And then at the end of the year, we will come back for another, or we will stay longer for an additional fifteen days to what we like to call seal the deal. And so our students will be coming for an additional thirty days to receive that jump start, to get them ready, to get those prerequisites in place. And then stay an additional fifteen days at the end of the year to make sure that we have mastery of those skills. And so as you heard from our parent, this is what was developed by the Clark Primary and Clark Intermediate communities, the parents and the teachers. And we'd like to have you place this in the consent agenda for Tuesday.
Thank you, has everyone had a moment to look at the calendar? I think we're all in consensus of it, we will place it on the consent agenda for Tuesday night's board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse. May I point out a typo? I hate myself again for doing this.
Oh, my goodness.
On the English side.
Yes, ma'am.
Down in the lower right corner, traditional.
Oh, I see it. And you know, we're translating it, but you can see that in Spanish, tradicional, and it should be in English and traditional. We will have this calendar posted for our families in both English and Spanish, but this is the Spanish word. Thank you, Dr. Jensen.
Okay, we will continue with the next item on our agenda. So I'd like to recognize our executive chief of district operations, Mark Miranda.
President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, members of the board, we are on page twenty seven. This is a recommendation for the board to approve the prevailing wage rates as attached to this agenda item. Texas Government Code, Chapter twenty two fifty eight, requires that the school board adopt a minimum prevailing wage rate for work that's performed on public works. All contractors and subcontractors are then required to pay the minimum prevailing wage rate as as approved by the board. So a prevailing wage rate is basically a minimum wage rate of pay for craft or construction workers working on a public project. For example, for our bond and non bond construction projects, we have been using a previous version of these wage rates. Adopting these wage rates will allow us to incorporate these into future construction contracts. And I would be happy to entertain any any questions about these. Hearing that, I thank you and appreciate the time.
Thank you for providing the definition of the duties of these people. You know, this is one thing that constantly amazes me being on the school board is the things you all have to think about in the physical plant.
Right.
It's just amazing. Thank you for being with us.
You're welcome.
Mr. Miranda, I'm surprised that your rates are effective using twenty nineteen rates.
Yep.
Instead of twenty twenty one, I hear so many things going up, especially housing.
The wage rates are updated every three years. And so that's why the twenty nineteen, so in twenty twenty two, the rates will be updated one more time. So in twenty twenty two, we're likely to bring back a new set of rates for you to adopt. The majority of our contractors and some contractors actually pay above these rates. This sets the minimum level that they have to pay.
I'm wondering. I don't recall seeing any of these particular classifications in our C T E offerings. I know we must, we probably must do some of this stuff. These are, this is a decent minimum wage. This is clearly a living minimum wage and like you said, a lot of the contractors will pay more than this. So I'm wondering how well we're doing it sort of training anybody to be a carpenter or concrete finisher.
Yeah, we're we're actually in the process. It's funny that you say that we're in the process of looking at all of those C T E course offerings as we speak. And we have meetings.
When the president is talking about infrastructure, this looks like this is what this is. And there will be lots of opportunities in the coming years for people who have these skill, have been trained in these skills to make a nice living for themselves.
So it's part of our college and career readiness and it's also part of our industry based certifications that we're looking for. All of which help us in our accountability ratings. And so we're definitely something that we're looking at. And these are, these are very good working rates. And and as I said, these are actually the minimum rates. So what you see here is usually the four of what those skill sets are paying.
Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our general counsel, Jeremy Pinkley.
Good evening, I have a few policies to talk to you about tonight. The good news is these are all second readings. And so on page thirty one, we have the second reading of revisions to board policies, E I A, E I C and E I E. Again, the board reviewed these last month. I know there were a number of questions and some really good discussion. They were approved on first reading and now we just need to do the second reading. So what I'll do is ask if you have any questions about these, since you have reviewed them pretty in depth previously.
Dr. Watson, are you happy? Well, there weren't any changes to the way we do in vowels and cells. I feel like last few years, there's been some controversy about how that got calculated and determined. So are we happy with the way this is laid out?
Yes, yeah, I'm happy the way that it's laid out, you know. And a lot of districts, as we we've kind of talked before, have changed the way they do vowels and cells. But for the most part, in terms of this policy, I'm fine.
And if there aren't any questions on that one, the next policies that we have to discuss are part of Tasby's numbered update one sixteen. And those are going to start on page forty five. They include policies, C Q B, D C D, F F A C and G K A. And just like the prior ones, these were discussed at first reading in March. And I know the governance committee had an opportunity to look at them before they came to the board in March. And so again, I would just ask if there are any questions, since the board has already had an opportunity to review these pretty extensively.
And I noticed, I just got another notice that I need to complete my this year's cybersecurity training. So I guess they update it all the time. I've got to tell you, it's made me paranoid because.
They have some members in this room that have to retake their train. No names.
Because we were told that they were going to send out messages that were clearly violation and we needed to not open those.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I guess this is an up new and updated version this year.
We just had that conversation in cabinet, many of us had to got caught. And so I'm like, I'm not opening any messages, anything with a title, I'm not opening.
It happens, I just got tagged at work.
I will, I will just add it, it is a very, very real threat. And so we, in our I T department, we have a new cybersecurity person who's who we're very excited about, who's helping us in this area, you know. These are things we take seriously. And so the know before training and the the emails that they send out fishing for it is just a really great learning opportunity that everybody gets a chance to partake in. So notice how we're talking about it, therefore it's on everyone's radar.
So if there aren't any other questions, I would just ask that these be placed on the consent agenda for Tuesday.
Thank you. As we continue this evening, our next item, we will recognize our chief financial officer again, Anne Anne Westbrook.
Thank you, President Newhouse. So we have a few items this evening, beginning on page fifty six in your binders. And the first item is our monthly taxpayer refund list. And as you can see, that list is growing by the month as refunds are being processed and adjustments are being made. And I did want to note last month, Dr. Jensen, you asked the question, you said, it seems as though we don't have very many adjustment refunds. And I said, it's probably just timing. And so you can see this month, quite a few of those adjustment refunds have returned to the list.
Notice that one company here comes to a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Between two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Large ones. Jinxed us. If there are no questions on that item, then our next item begins on page sixty. And it's our monthly list of cooperative purchases that exceed fifty thousand dollars. We have a few items on that list and we're ready to answer any questions that you have regarding those.
I may have an unusual question. I wonder if two hundred iPads is enough. It just seems like we have a huge need for immigrant English.
For our English language learners, yes. And we're focusing these two hundred using federal funds on the newcomers. And so, yes, we definitely could use more. But yes.
Our next slide. Video insight system we built.
Video insight is the application that runs our our camera servers.
No additional questions on that list, then if you can turn with me to page sixty two. And this is, we're seeking the board's approval to roll forward our bank depository services contract that we have with B B V A for an additional two year term. And so under the Texas Education Code, we're allowed to have three two year rolls so long as the terms are favorable and the agreement is still favorable for both the school district and our banking depository. And so we have had a great working relationship with B B V A, they've been very accommodating, listening to our needs. And we're still receiving competitive rates across the board, as competitive as they can be in this environment. And so we would like to ask for the board to allow us to roll for a second time for an additional two year term that would run from July of twenty twenty one through June of twenty twenty three. And that would leave us with one more additional role that we could do two years from now, under the the R F P that was completed in twenty seventeen. Okay. No questions on the bank depository item, then we would move to our next item, which is on page sixty four. And this is related to our custodial supplies. So we are at the end of our term and it would be time for us to do a request for proposal for custodial supplies. But given the environment that we're in right now, primarily because the cost of supplies are very high right now. It doesn't appear to be a good time for us to go to the market and we would like for costs to stabilize more before we put out a request for proposal. So what we'd like to do is have the ability upon your approval to go back to our current vendors and negotiate a pricing for this upcoming one year term. And then reassess where we are after that one year. And if the market has become a little bit more stable, then we would be able to do a request for proposal and fill this out, the district could get some consistent pricing.
I was going to ask about the vendor on page sixty nine, when you compared him to the others, they seem to have. Greater percent fees. So I thought there must be some reason why you wanted them again.
No, ma'am, that's actually a different, that's our next item.
Wrong page, sorry.
You're quite all right. There's no real supporting documentation with this one because we're asking for the approval to negotiate the pricing for the next year. We're almost there, Dr. Jensen. So if there are no questions on the custodial supplies and, and if you all are okay with on Tuesday evening, that being on the consent agenda for us to start those negotiations. Then we'll move to our final item, which is a request for proposal for some summer renovation projects under the CMAR, the construction manager risk delivery method. We're seeking a construction manager that would oversee these projects. And with your approval, the board would be giving the superintendent. The authority to move forward with negotiating for a guaranteed maximum price for these projects. And there is a list of the projects in the, the very last page of your document. And those are the projects that the vendors responded to. However, since the initial. Projects were listed, we have decreased that number of projects to just two. And that's the first one, which is the Westfield Barbary Edition. And the third one, which is the enclosure at the Spring Leadership Academy. The second one, for the conference room renovation, we've put that project on hold indefinitely. But it was included as a part of this initial RFP. So the deletion of that project will be handled as part of the negotiations after this process is completed.
Ms. Westbrook, I would like, just like to say, I'm glad to see item 13, the Spring Leadership Academy enclosure. I pass by that facility quite often during the week. And I see the kids out there, the gym kids out there and it's an open exposure. And I pass by there and I think with all the things that are happening now with these crazy gun shootings and things that are taking place. It's just a place where that could happen. It's just open for our kids. So I'm glad to see that we are enclosing that to keep it a little more private to the community.
Yes, ma'am. Safety and security are top priority.
Yes.
So you see our. Barbara Edition being. Accommodated. Did you say when? Where? Where?
Where, where physically in the building? Is that, is that the question? Where physically?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it will be in the Westfield main. We've located an area towards the front that has an external exit so that if they receive patrons, they'll be able to have their own entrance. And we have designed a security plan surrounding that so that visitors that are coming to visit that will only stay in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Am I reading this right? Sterling structures scored higher in the evaluation?
Thank you. I sounded very loud to myself. So they did score higher in the evaluation. So step one is the vendors that score above 80%. So that's the first criteria. The next criteria is the lowest price. So both that vendor and the recommended vendor were above 80%, but the recommended vendor GTT was at the lowest price.
Thank you.
Good question.
If there are no further questions, President Newhouse, that was the last item.
Any questions for Ms. Westbrook? Hearing none. Thank you so very much, Ms. Westbrook. There are no other items on tonight's agenda. So I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting for tonight.
Madam President, I'm moved that we adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Winford Adams to adjourn our meeting for tonight. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. There's no further business. The meeting is officially adjourned at 8:56 PM.